I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Monday, July 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meaningly can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Levering and Alderman Cleve will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan. Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Alderman Maria.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettich.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Camo. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
You have 12 physically in attendance.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Communications.
Communication has been received from President Lori Wiltshire, National Board of Aldermen, calling the Special Board of Aldermen meeting on July 18th of 2022.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Daniel R. Healy of Derry, New Hampshire, to the office of City Clerk for an indefinite term to serve at the pleasure of the mayor and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I will accept the nomination and refer it to the Special Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee immediately following this meeting. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance 02220, establishing one-way streets and changing the stop intersection near the Franklin Street School.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 022020 by replacing it with a Goldenrod copy placed at my desk this evening, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this legislation is to arrange the street traffic for safety reasons around the new Franklin Street School. And with about 14 engineers, we thought we had everything covered until we realized that we don't have a stop sign at the intersection of Locust Street and Franklin Street, which probably should have been there anyway. That's what the Goldenrod copy adds, is that one stop sign. So this is, and the timing is, I won't say critical, but we need to have DPW have the time to set all this traffic pattern up before school starts. And so, once this legislation passes this evening, they can get started. So, thank you.
You've heard the motion, as is your discussion. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I would just like to chime in and echo what Alderman Dowd. As Chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, this was brought up before that particular committee, and I agree with this amendment because it clarifies further on what the committee wishes were and everything, and just solidifies it even more. And also to keep in mind, and I may mention again, when the motion does come up for the full, the bill as amended, this is in regard to safety. This will expedite the, we've got to think of the, you know, the transfer of students to and from school at that particular time, so this will enhance the safety. So as we vote on this, think of safety. Thank you.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. Prior to doing this, when Franklin Street School had first opened up, I got a number of phone calls from parents that had students that were there and the dropping off and picking up of students and drivers just speeding, speeding by. And one of my concerns was that we didn't have an appropriate drop-off and so on. That has been changed as part of this design, and part of the design was changing the streetscapes and the direction. I tried to do my best to let people in the neighborhood know. I put flyers and my business card and so on. I did not do that with businesses. I did do that with the residents that were there. I did not hear from any of them, but I have a feeling that the message still did not get out there. I think there's still going to be a number of residents that are going to be confused and a little frustrated by this, this change. I want them to know that it's primarily because of the safety issues that has to be done then. We do lose some parking, and parking is extremely important in that area. So I'm hoping that we can work with parking to figure out other ways that we can create more parking. Throughout that entire area, there is a mismatch of 30-minute, one-hour parking and so on. I know it's a story for another day, but the residents that are listening and hearing about this, I think that they need to be made aware that it really was a safety issue for the children more than anything, but there is going to be frustration, and I can understand that. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Is this, is this on the amendment, or this is on the amendment? I will reserve.
The motion before us is to amend.
Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to the final passage of the amended motion for R. 22020. And just one more piece, this plan was put together with the, an entire group from DPW, the city engineer, the city parking code, Roger Houston, or Hudson, I'm sorry. Hudson's the engineer.
Husband.
Husband. Anyway, and the school department, and the fire department, and the police department. Everybody's had their, their say in this. We've made a couple modifications for the fire department, and everybody is comfortable with this. The children being dropped off for the school, or preschool, little kids, and sometimes two in a car, and they have to open the outside door, so leave the traffic has to be one-way. And for safety, and also, the school parking is going to be in that huge parking lot, not on the street, so that'll free up some space.
Alderman Clemmons.
While I appreciate the fact that, that the work that's been done on this, I can't support this legislation with Franklin Street being a one-way, one-direction away from Main Street. I don't think it bodes well for the future, particularly if we're going to connect Franklin Street, hopefully to the Broad Street Parkway someday. So I, unfortunately, because of that, will be not supportive of this.
Alderman Lopez.
I probably won't support this myself, although I did support the amendment, because anything that improves the traffic control in the area, I think is probably a good thing. But I have a lot of concerns about the residents' ability to participate in decision-making. While we did have over a dozen engineers, as Alderman Dowd mentioned, and city department staff that reviewed this, there wasn't really a clear opportunity for the public to weigh in. There was a committee meeting, a committee on infrastructure meeting last Wednesday, but at least the copy of the agenda that I have didn't have this on the agenda. And I believe Alderman Dowd had to be recognized in order to be added to the agenda, and that it was mentioned then that that was in order for the committee to review it in time for tonight's meeting. So if I'm the public, and I get a notice from my alderman, and I don't necessarily know her personally, but I feel like maybe I can watch a meeting, or, you know, connect via Zoom or something, and then I have two special meetings where there's way less notice, I don't think that's necessarily an opportunity for residents to weigh in. I know that there's a group home in that area, and I don't know that having traffic directed in their, in their direction is going to be a great idea. And I know that children play on that streets. I regularly see them playing basketball or other games in the street, and that's not going to be a good idea if it's going to be a one-way traffic funneling drivers through there. Well, I get that there's younger students that need to be protected, and that we need to make sure that we don't create a, an unsafe environment for them. I also am not entirely confident that this does that, as the traffic circles around and then crosses itself back onto Franklin Street with a stop sign. I can see if a number of people are trying to pick up, that there might be a backup onto Winter Street or Locust Street, and that that could cause frustration and generally create a very difficult environment for the residents living there. And as the representative of a ward that has basically been turned into a series of one-way streets, I would think as a resident, I would at least want the chance to weigh in on that. So I don't think I'm going to support the amendment, but I also recognize that we all came here tonight to vote on it, so I don't think there's going to be a will to send it back to committee.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I just want to point out that Franklin Street's only one-way from Locust around the school. And, and according to the city engineer, if it's ever connected to the Broad Street Parkway, it's going to be one-way from Main all the way. But, you know, this is, this is a safety item that's been through a lot of scrutiny, and I do believe a lot of the butters have been notified.
Alderman Clemmons and Alderman Cleve.
Yeah, I mean, my grandparents used to live up in that neighborhood. My father grew up in that neighborhood. That street's been a two-way street for as long as I can remember, all the way down Franklin Street, and then you go up Charles into like Fairmont Heights in Little Florida. It's going to create a traffic jam. It's going to create a major problem. It is a main thoroughfare down from anyone who lives in Fairmont Heights in Little Florida. That's how you get to Main Street. I understand that there are other ways to get to Main Street, but this is going to create an inconvenience, because you're going to have, you can't even go, it's not even like you can go down Charles and go into Winter. You can't even do that. You have to, looking at this map, it looks like you have to either go down Auburn or go down Terrace Street. And I, I just think, I just don't think this is a good idea. I think we're taking a major thoroughfare, and we're changing the direction in the other way. I also agree with my colleague from Ward 4 that the public, this is a major change for, to a major thoroughfare, and I think we need to have more input from the public.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you, Madam President. And through you to Alderman Dowd, is this a must to pass today? I mean, is there something that, that's my first question, and my second question is, the remainder of Franklin Street will still remain as a?
Two-way.
Two-way. However, Locust Street will be a one-way. So to Alderman Clemmons' comment and Alderman Lopez's comment, that's exactly what we'd be talking about, is that they would have to turn down Green Street, et cetera, to get to, if you point that, to Little Florida and so on. I guess that's my question, is, does this direction have to go this way? Does it have to happen today? Could we have a public input onto, into this?
We, we had numerous meetings.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah. We had numerous meetings, and the reason it has to get passed is so the DPW has the time to do all the street markings and the street signs and get this in place, and people used to it before school opens. If we don't pass this, we probably have to close that school. And, believe me, that's a price tag nobody wants to hear about.
Alderman Tebow.
And again, this was, was the city's traffic engineer, the city engineer, all of DPW, police, fire, they all concur, this is the safety of those little kids.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I've been on the fence on this. I'm most likely going to support it. The only concern I have is that we're having a Board of Aldermen meeting, and we didn't allow public comment ahead of time, which would allow people to speak on things that are on the agenda. Not that there's a ton of people here that are, would be public comment, but usually when we have any kind of Board of Aldermen, especially since we just jumped this onto the agenda last week, I would think we would have had at least an opportunity to have public comment before we vetted this out and voted. But that's my only, that's my main concern, is that, again, we're not allowing people to speak on it, and it seems like we're, and we may, maybe for a good reason, but it seems like we're rushing it through.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, as Chairman of Infrastructure, this wasn't thought of yesterday. This has been debated for several months. It's been on the docket. We didn't have meetings on some of it, and the reason is because budget takes a priority. We had budget meetings, and we have to get a city budget done. But at that particular time, as Chairman of Infrastructure, not one scintilla of a complaint have I received from the public on this particular thing, as Chairman of the committee. Now, yeah, this board and infrastructure has in the past. Kinsley Street, West Hall Street, used to be two ways. Now they're one ways in either direction. Whenever we change traffic patterns, yeah, but I guarantee you, the sun will come up tomorrow. We have sitting before us coming out of infrastructure in the not-too-distant future of looking at West Pearl Street, and what to do there and to enhance that particular thing. We make these changes all the time, and if we do find out that something is wrong with this particular traffic pattern, if we receive information from the public who are affected, that does not mean stop us. By passing this this evening does not stop us one bit from taking under advisement again to the board and try to come up with a better solution, if there is a better solution. I've found in the past, when you deal with things regarding, and what I brought up in my original comments, was safety, but when I brought up things about safety and go back a bit to my time on the fire department, they were not really popular items, but items that needed to be done to enhance. And if this is going to have potential impact, I am not going to be an Alderman to delay the opening of school because of a particular traffic pattern. I'm willing to let this go, go through, and we could take it under advisement of study, and then look at this after several months, and we may come to find out there was no hiccup at all, you know? So I think passing it this evening is the wise choice. But therefore, I respect my fellow Aldermen that do have concern on this, and I encourage them to come to infrastructure meetings and to voice your concerns, and to keep this, and become the watchdogs of this particular project. And if we find out there are hiccups with this, we'll address it and have meetings, and we'll try to, to resolve the issue. But I think two items. The opening of the school, very important, but supersedes that, I think we have to pass this for the safety of the students who will be attending this particular facility. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I, I guess when this was first presented, and it was a while ago, it was when we were doing the bond for the school, the thought was to use Winter Street as the drop-off area, and I am fine with that. And I actually don't mind some of the other changes to it. My objection here is the one-way of Franklin and Charles. And so, you know, if, if that could be changed, then, you know, I could support some of this stuff, but changing a major thoroughfare, and that's what it is, and that's why some of the people here are saying it has to be changed, is because it's a thoroughfare, right? So people go down that road in both directions, and it's a busy traffic area. So why do we have to do these changes? Oh, because it's a school. Well, I get that, but we have to balance the needs of the neighborhood as well, and I don't think that this does it. I appreciate what the traffic engineers say, and I appreciate all that, but my common sense, having driven that street and knowing that neighborhood, tells me otherwise. And so, I don't care, I will not support changing that street to one-way. If you want to change it to something else, where Charles Street and Franklin Street remain two-way all the way to Main Street, I can live with something like that, but otherwise, this isn't going to get my support.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you again, Madam President. I'm hearing what everybody is speaking about, and there are a couple things I want to say. First off is, from the day that school opened, I got barraged by phone calls of the lack of safety, and the lack of safety is on Franklin Street. That's where the real issue is. That's where the speeding is, because it is a major thoroughfare. While I'm very concerned that not enough residents were given a heads-up about this, spoke to them about it, I think that we did do them a disservice, and any part that I played in that, I do apologize. I understand the, the concern about the one-way on Franklin, but the one thing I've heard about over and over and over again is the safety thing. I would never micromanage DPW, nor would I try not to question them. I do have concerns that it would take them this many months to paint and put signage up. I think they would be able to do it a little bit quicker than that, but again, I'm not going to micromanage it. I can't see how this could delay the opening of the school. I would like to see it kind of put off at least another couple weeks, but again, I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight that. I am going to support this, because we really do need the, the safety of it. And from when the school opened back in September and so on, I did speak to Alderman Dowd about the necessity of doing something. The, the drop-off and pickup, if I'm not mistaken, are still on Franklin Street, right? It's just the handicap access on Winter Street, if I do understand that correctly from conversations that have been had. Franklin is a major thoroughfare. That is a very scary area. Terrace is going to have a hard time dealing with that amount of traffic that is going to be redirected to it. Auburn could handle it. Locust Street, again, especially between Terrace and Winter Street, is going to be a little bit harder for people to be, to be driving through and so on, but I am going to support it. I'm going to support it reluctantly, only because of the, the lack of public input on it. But I will support it, because I've heard nonstop about the safety of Franklin School, and I don't want any child to be hurt. And there are a variety of different types of students that are in that school as well, and that is my biggest concern.
Alderman Dowd.
Just a couple other things. One, the Franklin Street right there in front of the school's only two lanes. So when the parents park the drop-off their kids, there's only one lane, and it's a real issue when it was two-way traffic. And when you're opening the door on the travel lane side, because a lot of people have two little kids, it was an issue. Also, while we were there with all the engineers, people come down, there was a stop sign at the end of Charles Street before you turn onto Franklin. Nine out of 10 cars didn't even slow down to go around that corner. That's extremely dangerous. We posted a police car there for a while, but the people across the street don't, they don't like to have police cars parked there, because that's the?
Off 34.
Right. So the police department said, thought this fixed that problem. The fire department has no problem getting the fires. Everybody's had their say in this. And there's a new handicap ramp that's going on Franklin Street's side of the school, so when you get kids that, that need handicap access, that's where they're going to go in. Again, this has been, been subject of many, many meetings. The architect and the, and the city engineer came up with various plans. This was the one that everybody agreed to. And they need time to order signs, schedule lists, they, they can't go out tomorrow and do the work.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. First, I would like to just say, Alderman Dowd, you bring up a very good point about that 90-degree turn. It's one of the sharpest turns in the city on Franklin coming onto Charles Street. But I would like the other members of the board to understand a couple of points here. We could have built probably, and Alderman Dowd can chime in, maybe another building, another location, probably a little bit more accommodating to the traffic. At what price? You've got to keep in mind, when you repurpose a building, you might have a new building, and you can remodel it to such, to fit your particular needs, but you're repurposing. You're going against the grain of what the original architect designed the building to be, and this building has been modified to make it an enhancing educational experience. Is it in the best of areas? The answer is no, and this is a full, I think, legitimate choice with this, to do this. But I would like to remind you, this is like when I used to take my kids to the beach and find out that one of them forgot their bathing suits. The thing is, we are now into the end of July, and Alderman Dowd, when do schools start? September, I mean, August?
August.
And we only have limited time, if it comes back to committee. I'll put the work in, I'll try to put it on the front burner, but there may not be enough time to have this done. So you've got to weigh that particular balance too. I understand, but like I say, everything can be flexible. Concerns, if it doesn't work out, again, and at the risk of repeating myself, and I'll be brief, but it could be modified in the future, if need be. But we might find out that the whole key here is safety, and this is what brought this particular legislation forward, because if it wasn't for safety reasons, why have this particular, you know, amendment? Or why do you have this particular ordinance? So as we vote, again, I'll remind you of that five-letter word, safety.
How many?
Six letters.
How many letters?
Five.
So confident in all the planning and all of this.
It's not the four letter.
Alderman Clemmons.
I, I'm all set.
You're all set. Alderman Lopez.
So, I understand the sentiment being expressed by my fellow Aldermen, and just for the record, S-A-F-E-T-Y is not five letters.
Thank you.
Just to explain the confusion over there. And I, I don't think there was enough time to fully vet this, because normally, we do have agenda items on Infrastructure Committee meetings, so that when something's presented at the Board of Aldermen in the ordinary process, the public can say, okay, well, it'll be at the next Infrastructure Committee meeting, look at the Infrastructure Committee meeting, see it on the agenda, and then weigh in. That didn't exactly happen here, and then they would at least know, oh, shoot, I missed the Infrastructure Committee meeting where it was commented on, but at least it'll be at the next Board of Aldermen meeting, except we're here on a Monday night at a Special Board of Aldermen meeting. So I just want to acknowledge that the public may not have had the access that they traditionally did. I do also recognize that there's a reason for it. We have to figure out how to get this implemented, striped, and, and presentable, in time for people to learn how to do it. And just saying, well, I'm sure Department of Public Works can, can get this off the ground much faster than that. Now, I agree, they probably could, if we didn't have them doing 30 or 40 other things. So I also understand that to do this right, and to make sure that this is done effectively, we have to recognize that DPW has a lot to do. So I don't necessarily want to stop it from happening. My concern was mostly the process, and I think to people who may feel, may be watching this and may feel like they didn't get a voice in, you know, what's happening in their immediate neighborhoods, it's true, but at the same time, if we don't implement a plan that has been vetted by the traffic engineers and Department of Public Works in enough time for all of those people who are on the thoroughfare to get used to it, then they won't be able to change behaviors in four or five weeks, and it's going to be an even more unsafe situation, because you don't want to switch your plan mid-process. That's also why my concern is that this, as willing as Alderman O'Brien is to tackle this at the Infrastructure Committee, I would imagine we'd have to wait until next year, because we're about to put a bunch of signs in the ground and repaint the ground, so we can't exactly go back and say, oh, you know what, that, that one-way was a bad idea, because there'll be striping everywhere, and it's not a reversible thing. So I, I brought up the issue and the concerns about transparency and public input and all that, because I felt like they needed to be brought up, but I also think this has proceeded to the point where we don't have a lot of options. I, I have a couple of minor questions, I guess, to me, I mean, everything's minor until there's a traffic accident, but I'm not sure where people coming down Locust are going to go if they encounter a one-way street after Winter. I don't know for sure that we had a traffic. I don't know for sure that we had a traffic study confirm that the majority of the speeding was coming from the Auburn Street direction and not from Main Street because, from personal experience, I would say people are coming at a pretty good clip from both directions. Those are things we probably should be talking about at the infrastructure committee in order to fine-tune this. And it wasn't my intention to completely stall this. I just have a lot of concerns about the ability for people who live in that neighborhood who are worried about their kids in their driveways to weigh in on this.
Alderman Moran, and then Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually came in prepared to vote for this, and then I listened to the debate, which I guess is why we have it. But I would express my concerns too about public input and then the feeling of psychological key words used. Almost feel like we're being strong-armed into voting yes, which is also very concerning. You know, kicking the can down to a special board meeting with six weeks before school starts seems like you put us in between a rock and a hard place. It's not something that, you know, a position I want to be in despite the budget and all these other important things we do, no matter what, budgeted or not. And I hear my colleagues to the right of me express concern that the public didn't have enough input. I completely trust the city engineers and the strong government that we have here, but I also want to hear what the people have to say. So now, after hearing this debate, I'm going to be voting no on this.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah. Looking at the map more, I mean, I don't know what the engineers would think, but, you know, if this went back and Charles Street was a two-way all the way down to Winter, and you basically made a one-way loop around the building, I guess reluctantly I could support something like that. But I think that should go back to committee and be discussed. I just don't think that this map is going to benefit the neighborhood.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I do take somewhat a little bit of umbrage. As far as scheduling any meetings in the city, we have to follow, I'm sure the city clerk can verify, we have to follow certain procedures and all procedures legally where followed. I cannot encourage people who stay at home whether to watch, like eagle eyes on the city government. I think they do trust us somewhat to come up with the best solution as possible. But now we're getting into like deeper waters and everything. There's no city engineer here. This meeting is turning, whether to vote on a particular subject, it's turning into an infrastructure meeting. And so therefore, I don't think there's any solution coming forward. So therefore, Madam President, I would like to make a motion to move the question.
Motion is to move the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it.
Roll call.
Motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 2220 as amended. 2220. Okay, yeah, 2220 as amended. Alderman O'Brien.
Alderman Clemmons, I'm sorry. Are we, did you ask for a roll call on the motion to close debate?
No.
No.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
That's okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderwoman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Mosher?
Yes.
You have eight yays and four nays. And that motion carries. Ordinance 2220 is declared duly adopted as amended. Period for general public comment. Is there anyone on?
I'm Lori Ordolano.
Okay, Ms. Ordolano.
Hi, Lori Ordolano, 41th Street. I just want to make a quick comment. I think that when you are addressing ordinances that would ordinarily be addressed at board meetings in the past, having the two public works is a gesture that should be followed. You know, the special meeting, I think I had to address the city clerk position, I'm not certain. But when it involves legislative, I think the two public comments should be made. And I'd like to address the high position of the city clerk. You know, I noticed that this individual is a fairly young person, and he's coming to a city that I think is very corrupted and working for a mayor that I think is really unethical, unscrewable, a liar. And I've had to put in a lot of lawsuits involving records and a lack of openness for records. Some of the issues have stemmed around the clerk's office. So I'm very concerned about this because I think there needs to be a lot of changes made in that clerk's office, and I think not having somebody certified for three years was a problem. I think a good number of our policies are outdated. When a citizen comes to the clerk's office and asks to inspect records and is told they're not there, and then asks, well, do you know where they are? And the answer is, under RSA 91A, I don't have to answer questions. It ensues into an argument, at which point it then is revealed that the records are in another part of City Hall, and you're told where they are. I don't think those fights are necessary to have, and I don't think that's compliant with the law. And this is a city that violates open records frequently. I spent the weekend working on a pro se lawsuit, that's the biggest one I filed so far, all on record issues. And I'm disgusted. I'm just disgusted that this is what it goes to, and it never stops. So I hope this new clerk has the gumption to make change, but I have seen this mayor ruin many careers on good people. And when I see somebody young stepping into the seat, I'm thrilled, but I'm also concerned because this city is a career buster. So best wishes to you, and I hope you're dynamic and you manage our records better than they've been managed for quite some time.
Anyone else wanting to give public comment? Seeing anyone on Zoom? Okay, seeing none. Remarks by members of the board. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I just want to state for the record that our outgoing city clerk has done a superb job, and she should hold her head up high for doing the best work that I've seen in a city clerk since I've been an Alderman. So.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. First thing, absolutely echo Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Large Clemmons's comments. I've worked as assistant moderator, interim moderator, whatever it's called, selectman, ward clerk under her guidance during these elections, and she's been excellent. And I've also worked with Trish and Paul. So no drop-off whatsoever as they trained her. And the abuses she takes over the last few years has been just, I don't know, would break most people, but good for her. She's been able to handle it, and I think she's done a great job, and I really appreciate the work she's done for us. My other thing's a little bit off track, a little bit, but since we have most of the board here, I wanted to discuss it. So a couple of weeks ago, we went to an Elm Street board, not board meeting, but public hearing. And somewhere at some point, somebody mentioned $30 million to keep the Keith auditorium. And so I talked to the esteemed Alderman Dowd, because he's built lots of buildings in the city as an Alderman, and he knows everything about building. He's building a school for $77 million. Asked Concord how they're building a school. So I asked Alderman Dowd, and he told me there's no way that it would take $30 million to build this, to keep this auditorium. And I talked to a few other Aldermen too, and they said the same thing. But once the genie was let out of the bottle, everybody believes it's 30 million. So somebody mentioned on Facebook, hey, it's going to cost 30 million. So I went in there and I just said, no, it's not true. We've still got to vet a lot of things out. We don't know yet. And apparently, that was me misleading the public because on Sunday, I got a newspaper with an op-ed from one of our Aldermen in the horseshoe. And it was, 30 million was mentioned seven times in that op-ed. That's propaganda, and I don't believe that as Aldermen we should be doing that. And we all have our right to free speech, and I believe anybody can write an op-ed. But when you start taking things that aren't necessarily true and getting them out to the public, and if you say it enough times, people believe it. They believe the, I guess they say the lie, right? And I'm not saying it's a lie because we don't know. And again, he can say he doesn't agree with keeping the Keith. I'm fine with that. People have the right to their opinion. And at the very end of that article, he wrote, "A city official has his own agenda." And I know who that is. It's me. Because he basically said what I did on Facebook. So I wanted to talk about that because it's important that my agenda is directed by the public. We were elected to serve the public. In this article, he says, "Just about everybody wants to keep the Keith." Everybody. Nobody wants to bulldoze the Keith. No one. Well, then, instead of saying it's going to cost 30 million, why aren't we, as Aldermen, trying to find a way to keep it? That's what people want. So the only agenda I have, and the only bias I have, is to do what the constituents that elected us to do and go do it. And we can find a way to keep that way under 30 million. And just because it's 30 million doesn't mean it's taxpayer 30 million. There's ways to do this. And the consultants that came in went pie in the sky. I'll quote the esteemed Alderman Dowd, "The Taj Mahal of auditoriums." We don't need the Taj Mahal. We just need the Keith auditorium. And so I think when you say you don't have the agenda and you don't have, you have the facts and the other person doesn't have the facts, you have an agenda. Anybody who writes an op-ed has an agenda. And that's not how we should legislate. We should legislate in this horseshoe and in committee meetings. That's what our job is, based on what we were told by the people who elected us. And that's, I'm sorry, and it may sound snarky or whatever, but I'm going to believe someone like Alderman Dowd, who has the experience over someone who's been an Alderman for two minutes. Sorry. That's all I got to say.
Alderman Cleese?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to start by thanking Clerk Levering for all that she's done. Right from the beginning, she was put into a very large election with a lot of things that were different than from the previous years. We had more voters, I think, both registering and she as well as had to get all of the ward clerks and ward, just people in general. And I think she did a magnificent job. I don't think she slept for the week before and probably two weeks afterwards, or I should say, two weeks before and two weeks afterwards. She is an amazing person, and I am also very biased because she is also one of my constituents. And I threatened her when she said she was leaving. I said, you are not moving though, right? I think she's been a little non-committal on that. In any case, I am very pleased that all the work that she has done, and she has worked very hard, and she's taken much abuse from a lot of the public. I do have one second. I had a ward meeting last Wednesday, and the mayor who sat through all of it knows it went over two hours. It was a very long meeting, and I appreciate everybody that came. For the first time, I wasn't the one speaking, so the two hours is not because of me, probably because I didn't stop the other speakers, which is for me. The police were there. We have representatives from the Nashville Police Department. They did a phenomenal job talking to residents about break-ins, talking to residents about how they can keep their homes safe with cameras, talking to residents about the importance of community if you're not going to be home to speak to neighbors who can watch over your home. They offered, and I've spoken to some, that the police have come out to help them set up the cameras. Our city police are doing everything they can. We also had a speaker from the FBI who did speak as well. I was getting a little nervous that he was trying to scare people, but he did speak about gangs that are in and around Nashville and in the state, and really reiterated that they're not as many as we think. They just kind of come from all around, but they're not, many of them aren't really here in the city of Nashville. So that's a good thing to know. Around us, yes, but not necessarily in it. And we also had a speaker from Public Works who talked about the streets, and I'd like to truly thank Ms. Byers who stayed that 90 minutes before she got to speak. And she was phenomenal, and all of those that did speak stayed afterwards and talked to my constituents. We had about 40 people there, which amazed me. My husband kept having to go and set up chairs as people kept walking in. But we will be having a second one in either the end of August or sometime in September. And again, I plan on bringing some department people to the meeting so that they can speak and so on. It will not be having to listen to me, just like you are right now. But I want to thank all of those that came, including the mayor and all of my constituents that came and sat there for two hours. And we are going to be putting through another crime watch meeting in Nashville since the French Hill one has been gone. So thank you very much, Madam President.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, just a few quick things. One, I've worked with Sue Levering for a number of years. We were kind of devastated when she left her legislative assistance role because she'd been there so long, there wasn't anything that she knew how to do. And Dawn has done a great job filling in, but she also has done a superb job as city clerk. I know when we had just going through the renovation of Fairgrounds and had just redone the entire gymnasium, Sue and I get together to make sure that it could be used for a voting place and wouldn't destroy the floor that we just spent a lot of money fixing. So that was all taken care, went smoothly. And by the way, we made all the doors handicap accessible, so it's a much better place to vote now. So thank her for that. As for Elm Street, I don't have a mechanical engineer. I'm an electrical engineer, but I have been around a lot of building projects. And Elm Street today can be used for any kind of a performance. Nothing's changed. The only issue you'll have is we tear down the school building because the heat, electricity, and the power all come from the school building, in which case then you'd have to do a high-vac piece. But there's plenty of opportunity in, what I'll call, fairly new facilities around the auditorium and behind the auditorium to do everything that needs to be done. I mean, the one thing that's missing is a good-sized lobby and restrooms. There is a way that you could add restrooms without spending $30 million. And you could also take a phased approach over 10, 15 years to bring it up, much like they did in Laconia. But to spend 30 million is, first of all, the hardware design was done was to add a three-story addition to the auditorium. I'm not even sure what's in the three-story addition, but to me, that doesn't cut it, and especially with the room around the building that you can use. And so if you wanted to turn it into a completely new auditorium like they did in Laconia, yeah, you could probably spend 30 million, even though I think that number's high, no matter what you look at. But you don't have to spend anything right now. If we close the school, city picks up the costs for the heating and the electricity, and the auditorium can be used more often than it's used now because it's used every day by the school. I was associated with Actors Singers some time ago, and my kids are all associated with Actors Singers, and they have a number of performances there. People understand there's several practices before you actually put on shows. But the shows were always limited by the fact the school needed the auditorium. So there would be more performances with the school not being there. But I guess the key is, you don't need to spend $30 million today to make it usable. It can be used just by the city picking up the electricity and the heat. Period. Now, tear down the school again, that's a different story, but it's still not $30 million. So I hope we have a lot more meetings on Elm Street before we go anywhere and spend the dime. As far as the legislation we just passed this evening, I know it seems like it's coming in at the last minute, and to some degree it is. But first of all, the Joint Special School Building Committee didn't get this school until it had been open for a while, not until we started the new construction portion of it. So... So, you know, we just jumped into that. And I will tell you that the major issue we've been working for months is the egress towers on either side of the building. We had to negotiate things between the state fire marshal and the city fire marshal and get them on the same page and it took a long time. And then we had multiple meetings with city engineers on what's the best traffic pattern. We covered every alternative, believe me. There were like multiple issues of this type of document until it cut down to the traffic engineer and the city engineer saying, this is the way it's going to happen. So I'm glad that it passed today. We're only changing signs and putting lines on the street. So as to Alderman O'Brien's point, you know, if it doesn't work out, it's pretty easy to go out, take the lines off and change things. But it is a safety issue. I would have changed the direction of Franklin Street and what's that other street? On the west side because the number of cars that came around that corner at forty miles an hour without stopping for the stop sign was dangerous even without a school. But when you've got little kids getting in and out of cars in that narrow street, that was probably going to be changed one way no matter what because the police were going crazy. So anyway, I know the people on, the only houses on the block are Winter Street. All the other budding neighbors know all about this and they've all been discussed. The people on Winter Street, I'm sure know what's going on because the school's been there now for over a year. So, and Winter Street's going to be completely repaved and fixed for them. So I think there are as many benefits as downfalls. And as far as traffic for the fire department, they're finding the new, the new approach. So I'm glad we passed it.
Alderman, Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I don't want to repeat what's been said, but I wanted to thank city clerk Lovering for all of her hard work. I also was sad when she moved from being our legislative assistant to city clerk. I was happy that she was going to be around a bit longer. She's done a great job and I just know she'll have a wonderful retirement. We'll miss her dearly. I also just, it was moved before I got to speak on it, but I was not against this plan. I think that obviously the experts have done their work. My concerns were around making sure that the public just had time to wait. I say it in my business all the time, every time I skip steps in the process and always comes back and bites me. So I was just trying to be very true to the, to the process and making sure that people are heard so that we can, you know, take it into account. So I think the safety of the school is important and I'm glad that it's going to be addressed and hope that there'll be continual conversations with the community and police, fire, et cetera, on how, how this plan works. And then because it was talked about by a few, the Elm Street auditorium, near and dear to my heart, as someone who was on the board of the symphony, I've seen what that's like. I know what the scheduling's like. I've heard similar scheduling issues. Happened to have our, our city master plan out. I was looking at it for something else and one of the things is arts and culture. So I think that we do need to come up with a solution to continue. This is one of the biggest venues that we have and I think thirty million dollars is a little bit crazy. It sounds like there's a opportunity to make it more palatable and keep it in the, you know, in the opportunity for other arts organizations to use in the city. There's a ton of them. We have a lot of really great arts organizations and they're always looking for places to hold. And actually, once the schools are out, maybe I won't have to have dairy for my daughter's ballet recital. Anyways, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I would like to chime in too, wishing you the best wishes and Godspeed and your well-deserved retirement. I can speak, there is life after you leave the city. I don't know what I'm doing here, but anyways. But I came back. But I wish you Godspeed and everything else like that. And I'll tell you, I knew you as a friend prior to my getting on the board and as the administrative assistant, now a city clerk. Your professionalism has been duly noted and been an asset to the city, so I thank you and wish you again best luck. I would also just like briefly to say, take a step back on ordinance 22020. As I appreciate the alderman who voted against it. I understand, I appreciate your advocacy to that point. My advocacy is to push for the wishes of my particular committee. I will keep this as much as one can somewhat on the stove if something comes up. It does have something that needs to be watched and I think, I'm glad it went through. Let's try it out. I think there'll be other stakeholders that will come forward, such as the school department, other different people, people of the neighborhood. So we're willing, the infrastructure committee, I'm sure I speak on all their behalf, will keep an eye on this and if need be, you know, come up and convene another meeting. And final, you don't have on the docket, but I'd like to remind my all good friends on infrastructure, I think Thursday night, we have a meeting with the Joint Board of, Board of Public Works. This is on the landfill administrative building project, which probably the public hasn't heard. I mean, Alderman Dowd, I'm sure you're proud of what you're building, the new school. But I'm building a pretty good building too. It is, unfortunately, it's at the landfill, but anyways. But it is coming up quite nice and coming along. And again, it's another project that is fitting right in with the budget and everything else like that, so we seem to be doing pretty good. So we'll have additional information at the next meeting. So looking forward to city infrastructure committee there. So thank you.
Alderman Timmons.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo everyone's sentiment about Clerk Lovering. Thank you very much. I won't ever forget you because you're most of my grandkids' birth certificate. So that's a good thing. So we'll never forget who you are and I'm disappointed that I didn't have a lot of time with you, but congratulations on moving forward. And also like to welcome our new city clerk, Healy. You're moving into a great city.
Almost.
What? Haven't been interviewed yet. Okay. But this is a great, I mean, I hear these things and I get a little confused, but that's okay. But this is a great city. And if you get the job, you'll be working for a fantastic mayor. And I've been here thirty-two years and it's not rough. Okay? So, and to that, one other thing. We do open school on August 30th. So we got until that time to get our street painted and signs on and everything else.
That's all I have to say. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't want to be the only alderman to not wish you the best of luck. I'll leave that to Alderman Govea. But I wish you the best of luck on your retirement. I have not known you long, but I can tell that you are a person of character and you've served with grace, especially with all the comments that I've heard around the horseshoe. So I wish you luck in your retirement.
Alderman Govea.
I'll hop on the train. It seems like I'm buying a round of drinks after this, so happy retirement.
Alderman Jettie.
So I guess I'm the only one.
Call toss a football, yeah.
I didn't want to prolong the meeting. Planning on expressing my best wishes in private, but, and I will still do that, but I didn't want anyone to think that I was withholding anything.
Alderman Lopez.
So I too would like to express. A to my fellow Allenstown slash Pembrokean serving the city of Nashville and B for the many things you've done as our legislative assistant, as the city clerk managing a number of very high profile and difficult elections. And also a little bit more personally, when my mother passed away and members of the board came to the wake way up in Epsom in the middle of a snowstorm, one of my favorite memories is Alderman, or President McCarthy coming, just exploding in the door and being like, you should not let that woman drive you. Great memory and it was a moment of levity well needed. So I appreciate all the time you've been here and all the service that you've given.
That's true.
All right, so I'm the only one who has. And I'm not going to. No, I certainly am. Sue, you know, I mean, I've known you for twenty-five years. We worked very closely together. You know, I've been on the board twenty-three years. And I was devastated to lose you to the city clerk. Mayor Don just did that. Thanks, Jim.
He also got her.
Oh, is that true? You hired her initially?
I started under.
Oh, oh, oh. Well, okay, all right. I forgive you a little bit for that. But Sue, you know that I appreciate everything you've done, especially for this board, in any capacity you've served. So I just want to thank you and hope you enjoy your granddaughter and your happy and healthy retirement. You're welcome. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the July 18, 2022 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:02 PM.